We're going to go ahead and start because it's streaming. Our screen will hopefully be fixed here shortly. I'm going to call the order, the meeting of October 21st for the Missoula City Council. And if you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. Thanks. Let's go ahead and do roll call, please.
Anderson.
Present.
Becerra. Campbell.
Here.
Carlino.
Present.
Present.
Jones.
Present.
Jordan.
Present.
Nelson. Nugent.
Present.
Savage.
Present.
Cheryl.
Present.
LaZica.
Present.
And we do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We have minutes from August 12th, August 19th, and October 7th. Are there any changes to those minutes? See, no hands up online, no one in chambers. So those will stand approved. We have, we don't have any changes to the committee meeting agenda or, do we, Claire?
No, the Wednesday agenda is as posted. I just do want to note that it's an early start. We're starting at 8:30.
Okay, thank you for that. And then as far as special presentations and proclamations, we have someone here, hopefully, from the Upper Rattlesnake Neighborhood Council for an update. Okay, great. If you could come to the microphone and just state your name and spell your last, this one here. If you'd state your name and spell your last name so that, for the transcriptionist, that would be great.
Okay, it's Jeannie Adams, A-D-A-M-S.
And just go ahead and give us whatever update you have. We appreciate you being here.
The Upper Rattlesnake Leadership Team hosted our annual ice cream social in August. It was at Pineview Park. We had about 90 people come. It's a pretty good crowd. Topics presented at that event included transportation safety with mostly a focus on bike safety, updates from Bear Smart on implementing bear-resistant trashcans, and presentations from the Office's Emergency Management and the Rattlesnake Transportation Committee on their recent work. Leadership Team is currently in the process of developing a neighborhood survey to gather input on topics residents would like to see covered at our next general meeting in the spring. And additionally, a resident is set to present a grant proposal for a pickleball project in the Rattlesnake area. The leadership team looks forward to reviewing his proposal at the next meeting where we will decide whether to recommend it to the Neighborhood Grant Committee.
Great, thanks. Appreciate you being here for that update. Are there any questions for? Don't see any questions. Thank you so much, and thanks for your work on the council. Appreciate that. So we're going to move on to public hearings. Guess I'll read this. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each issue, the city council and the mayor invite community comment. City council holds a public hearing on the item. A member of council makes a motion and a vote is taken. The public hearing and vote take place on the same night unless there's a reason to hold the vote over to a later meeting date. And I think we have two public hearings tonight. And the first one is Edward Byrne or Byrne, Justice Assistant Grant. And we have Police Chief Mike Collier here to present. Hi.
Hello. Good evening, Council Chair, or Council President and Council Members. It is my pleasure to be here to present to you and to the public our request and intention on spending the 2024 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant. As a matter of record, my name is Michael Collier, and I'm the Police Chief. As I did in the committee hearing about a week ago, I'd like to take a moment to honor Edward Byrne. Edward Byrne was hired as a New York City Police Officer in 1987. And in 1988, he was sitting on a protection detail outside the home of a cooperating witness for a pending drug trafficking case. That night while sitting in his patrol car providing this protection detail, he was ambushed by two gang members who shot and killed him in his patrol car. Six days later, four members were identified as the offenders in this investigation. All four were arrested and later convicted and sentenced to 25 years to life in prison. His murder was ordered by a drug trafficker from his jail cell. This existing grant had been renamed in his honor. We have for many years applied for and been awarded this honor, or I'm sorry, this grant. And we have responsibly spent this money for decades. Tonight I have four programs to introduce to you as, to describe to you how we intend to send, to spend this money. The City of Missoula is the fiscal agent for this grant and provide pass-through money to Missoula County. The total award for this grant, for this grant is $67,035. Of that, $14,103 goes, passes through to the county, which they spend for a portion of wages on a property clerk. The remaining $52,962 is what I'm here to discuss with you tonight, and it is divided amongst four programs for the Police Department. Three of the four programs were previously approved from this grant last year and authorized through this same process. One of the four programs is a new program designed to consolidate, consolidate existing software. That's where I'd like to begin tonight. The new software that we are proposing is called Frontline Public Safety Software. Frontline will replace two existing software platforms, one called Lefta and one called Virtual Academy. Lefta manages all the data in our field training program. So the new officers who are hired by our department and are being trained on the street by existing experienced field training officers memorialize their training and progress through the Lefta program. The Virtual Academy program is what we use to disseminate policy, directive, and information to working groups within the department such as briefings. This frontline public safety solutions will consolidate both of those programs at a cost savings by reducing two subscriptions to one. That in and of itself is sufficient justifications to move to this platform, but it also adds value by allowing us to document other programs such as our quartermaster duties, which is tracking uniform and equipment, our vehicle maintenance, our firearms inventory, and training records. The frontline's public safety solutions is valued at $7,500. The next three are the, are three existing programs that we have previously authorized through this process. The first one is ESOP, which stands for Electronic Statement of Personal History, and that is the software we use to manage our background investigations for new hires. The Police Department has averaged over 30 new background investigations each year over the last three years, and they're very time-consuming processes. Since engaging with ESOP last year, as advertised, it saved us a significant amount of effort and coordination in completing background investigations. About 5,600 law enforcement and public safety agencies throughout the country use ESOP. Our subscription allows us to coordinate with those agencies and allows us to refer back to previous applications within our agency to ensure the applications are consistent and validated through the process. The subscription to ESOP is $5,000. The third request is to extend the timeframe to complete our rebranding and recruitment efforts from last year. The money authorized last year was put to use, and we completed all of the design work through Gecko. Gecko developed a new style guide for us to have a more modern and simple recruitment image that we can use to attract a younger and more diverse working group. However, the actual implementation of designing the hardware has proven to be difficult. We expect that we'll have new patches arriving within the next couple of weeks. We've, we've denied several of those because they didn't meet quality standards, but the newest one that we reviewed looks promising. Our collective bargaining agreement requires us to provide initial equipment and uniforms that are required by the city before it becomes the officer's responsibility to replace them. Had we not, have we not used JAG money for that, it would be on us to take that out of our existing budget. The request for this is $20,962. And the last one is the continued use of the subscription to SecureWarrant. SecureWarrant has been in place for many years here and is one of the single most, single largest improvements in our efficiencies in our criminal investigations. What SecureWarrant does is it allows us to engage with prosecutors and the judges to apply for search warrants and to provide search warrant returns. Basically, what this does is replaces our obligations of having to go to judges' chambers or go to judges' homes after hours and actually have signatures on warrants. Now we can route all of this electronically through SecureWarrant. SecureWarrant's subscription price to us is $19,500. So those four programs total $52,962. We have a proven track record of being responsible stewards of this money. I'm looking forward to moving these new, these new programs forward, and I'll be available for any questions if you have any.
Chief, thank you very much for your presentation. Hi, everyone. Mayor Davis, I was a little bit late joining our meeting. Thank you very much, President Cheryl, for kicking us off. And I'm, again, I apologize for being tardy. Ms. Trimble just wants to say for the record that I am here. And just look around here, see if anybody has any questions for the chief. Not in the room, I'm seeing. How about online? Yes, oh, Mr. Campbell, I'm sorry, Counselor Campbell. No? Okay. All right, then, this is a public hearing, and so we heard our staff presentation, see if there's any questions from council. Then I will ask that we hear for the main motion before we move to public comment on this agenda item. And so Counselor Anderson, I believe this would be in your committee. Let me just double-check here.
It is, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, whenever you're ready for the motion.
No problem. So I move the recommended motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an MOU with Missoula County to accept and expend the funds associated with the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, acronym JAG, for the year 2024.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. The motion is on the floor. This then opens up the public hearing, and it's time for public comment if anybody has comment on this agenda item. If you do, come on up. I'll start with folks in the room, see if anybody has any public comment. All right, not seeing any in the room. How about online? Any public comment online? Not seeing any public comment online. I guess that means you answered everybody's questions, chief. And so we'll bring it back here to council to see if there's any comments or additional questions from council members. All right. Not seeing any, then we'll go ahead and we will take a vote. So Ms. Trimble, when you're ready, we'll do a roll call vote.
First vote of the evening on approving, authorizing the mayor to sign the MOU for the JAG grant, beginning with Anderson. Yes. Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
And LaZica.
Yes.
And that's unanimous.
Wonderful, thank you. And Chief Collier, I just want to recognize you and your department for your ongoing professionalism and work that helps bring in additional grant resources like this and our collaboration with the county to better serve the community. So thank you very much.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Nice to see you here. Thank you. All right, that wraps up item 5.1, and so we'll move to item 5.2, which is the municipal storm water wastewater and water rate increases for fiscal year FY '25, FY '26, and FY '27, and amending the utility rate schedule effective January 1st of 2025. And we have Logan McGinnis here to present for this item this evening. Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you very much. Hope you can see me over my laptop. I'm a little vertically challenged, but. And I'll, if somebody could let me know when I share my slideshow that you can see it. Oh, I guess.
Ms. Trimble, I didn't know if you heard that Mr. McGinnis is, there we go, attempting to share. There we go.
All right, yes, thank you. Again, my name is Logan McGinnis. I'm Deputy Public Works Director for Utilities, here to present for a request to increase our utility rates for water, wastewater, and storm water. Just briefly hit on the agenda, kind of provide some background, and then I'll just go through water, wastewater, then storm water, and then closing and any questions that you might have. I do want to remind the council that the rates we're requesting are the basis for the operating budget and the CIP that the council approved earlier this year. So we presented a lot of the same information about the requested rates as part of the budget presentation. A little bit of background, Missoula's combined utility rates, when I say that, I'm just saying when you add up the water wastewater and storm water rates. Those are currently the lowest in Montana. We require additional revenues to keep up with inflation and to continue renewing our aging infrastructure. The current rates are based on a 2019 Cost of Service Study, which distributed costs among the various customer classes. And we believe that the rate structure continues to be equitable, so we aren't proposing any changes to the rate structure at this time. However, a member of city council has requested that we complete a new Cost of Service Study, and we think that's a reasonable request and a good idea. But it's, you know, it's a process that'll take a couple of years by the time we select a consultant and complete the study. So we're committing to basically completing a Cost of Service Study before we bring any future rate requests to the council. You know, in general, we believe it's preferable to ask for small or moderate rate increases every year. That way, we avoid shocking our customers while continuing to make ongoing investments in our system to improve our reliability and resilience. That wasn't always the case with the wastewater utility, which is why our rates are very low, but also why we feel like we're behind the eight ball on maintaining some of our wastewater So here's, as I said a little bit earlier, this slide is, compares the combined utility rates for Missoula with all the other major cities in Montana. The source of this data and several similar slides I'll show you later are from an annual rate study, rate survey, excuse me, conducted by the engineering firm of AE2S. The study assumes the average water and wastewater customer uses 6,000 gallons per month of water, which is pretty close to what our average residential customer uses. As of 2023, this slide shows Missoula had the lowest combined utility rates in Montana. We actually just got the 2024 survey a few years, a few hours ago and didn't have time to update this, but it continues to show that we have the lowest rates in Montana. Our initial presentation to the Public Works Committee, there were some questions about the recent history of rate increases for all of our utilities. So this slide pretty much shows it all back to 2011. So water is shown in blue, wastewater is shown in green, storm water shown in orange, and the purple line at the top is the total for all three utilities. Again, this is based on the 6,000 gallons per month assumption cited in the AE2S study. And I don't have a lot to say about the slide. You can kind of evaluate it for yourself, but sort of the big picture is if you look over the 16-year period reflected in here, our combined utility rate has increased by an average of about 4% per year. And I honestly, if, I don't, if people want to ask questions while I'm going through this, I'm, I mean, I, I don't know if that works for the process, but I'm, weren't happy to because we put this in here kind of in response to some questions we got last time. So.
Okay, thank you.
I will point out that, you know, we didn't have a stormwater utility until 2019, so, or, well, excuse me, 2017. So why are rate increases necessary? We need to address inflationary cost increases in all areas of expenditures, including energy, supplies, equipment, and labor. Most importantly, we need to maintain fund reserves as required by our lending institutions and our bond rating agencies. Our philosophy is to replace aging infrastructure before it fails. We want to avoid a situation like Atlanta experienced recently where hundreds of thousands of residents were without power for multiple days, excuse me, without water for multiple days as a result of a catastrophic water main failure. We don't want to have that happen here. We need to increase our utility capacity to accommodate anticipated growth. We want to improve reliability and resilience of our utilities. I think we did pretty well during the, the big July storm, but, you know, we need to keep improving and keep replacing our infrastructure. We want to continue replacing aging pumps, buildings, and water mains, and we want to focus on sustainability. We really need to reduce our water leakage, and we want to continue reducing our emissions through solar developments and things like purchasing electric vehicles. Our water wastewater utilities combine to use about 58% of the city's overall power or greenhouse gas emissions, so we, we need to try to reduce those numbers. Talk briefly about our water rates. As the graph shows, we're sort of in the middle of the pack, or compared to our peers in Montana. The average water bill, this was from the 2023 data, but the average water bill for a residential customer was about a little less than $36 per month. Something else that's interesting that I read a journal article in the last couple of weeks, and it's, it said that our water rates are about 82% of the national average of municipal water rates, and only about 62% of the national average of investor-owned utilities such as, you know, Mountain Water was. So we think we're pretty competitive in Montana, and we're very competitive nationally. I want to talk about how we would use the money if the requested rates are approved for water. We need to make progress toward our goal of replacing 1% of water mains per year. The last few years, we've increased our investments, but we're still only at about 0.7% per year. So we haven't made it to our goal yet. We want to build some solar arrays at six to eight water pumping facilities. We want to build engineering capacity so that we can design some projects in-house. Engineering costs are about 13% to 15% of the total cost to replace a water main. So at nearly $10 million per year, that's well over $1 million per year that we would spend in hiring consultants. So initially, we want to hire one utility engineer to design and inspect some water main projects, which will need, which will mean we need to borrow less money to complete those same projects. It'll save us money and result in a better trained workforce. We want to increase capacity to assist customers with water service replacements. A 10-gallon-per-minute water service leak costs our utility about $1,000 per year in power and chemicals. So this assistance would include expanding our loan program with loan forgiveness to incentivize replacement of leaking water services rather than just doing a Band-Aid repair, which is what a homeowner would typically choose to do. We will also be assembling a service line replacement crew that will provide homeowners another option, and will also provide more equipment and staffing for emergency situations. We believe we can replace water service lines at a lower cost than a private contractor since we don't have to make a profit. But there will still be plenty of work for all the contractors. There's probably 16,000 service lines in this valley that should be replaced today, so there's plenty to go around. We want to adjust our water operator wages to remain competitive, and we want to continue addressing a maintenance backlog at our pumping sites and replace inefficient pumps. Picture to the right is one of several pump houses where we have recently replaced inefficient So this graph shows the capital spending on water mains over the last eight years in green and the leakage rate in gallons per minute in blue. And as the graph indicates, leakage rates were increasing prior to city ownership in 2017, then briefly went down, but then spiked back up after COVID. But since COVID, our investments have increased significantly, and the leakage rate has been dropping as a result, from a high of nearly 10,000 gallons per minute to just over 8,000 gallons per minute. So we, we feel like we're making really good progress. Unfortunately, we invest more and more, but with the inflation we're seeing, we sort of have plateaued. So the last few years, we've, we've replaced about 2.5 miles per year with our goal is close to 3.5 miles per year. So we've made great progress, but we're still short of our goal to replace 1% of our mains per year. Talk a little bit about wastewater utility rates. So as the graph shows, we're far below our nearest competitor in Montana at about 18 bucks a month as of 2023. I want to talk now about how the money would be used if the requested rates are approved for wastewater. We really need to create an annual sewer replacement program similar to what we do for water. We've, really haven't replaced sewers at all, and we do some repairs, but it's been years since we've had a program to actually go out and replace sewer mains. And the sewer mains in town are just as old as the water mains, so we need to pay attention to them. We need to fund miscellaneous repairs at the Resource Recovery Facility, which is what we used to call the Wastewater Treatment Plan. We want to upgrade and expand our compost facility. This is a regulatory requirement that's requiring us to perform all composting operations on paved surfaces. The project will incorporate many other features, including significant odor control facilities. We want to upgrade our solids handling facilities at the Resource Recovery Facility. We have one centrifuge that needs to be replaced, and in the near future, we will need to provide additional centrifuges. We're working on a plan for a second solar farm at the Resource Recovery Facility. Our headworks facility is on a separate electrical feed from the one where we previously installed the solar farm, so there's a pretty significant electrical draw out there that, that we're not providing solar for. So that's, that's a big opportunity for us to put in another solar array that'll be around half the size of the, the one that we have out there now. We need to finish our, our recycle-activated sludge valve replacement project. This is a critical project to replace a bunch of failed plug valves, which will allow our RAS pumps, recycle-activated sludge pumps, to be taken offline for maintenance. Another big project is, the one pictured in the photo, is to design a replacement of the Clark Fork River Sewer Crossing. This is probably the most critical project we have because as the picture shows, the pipe is exposed in the Clark Fork River bed, and portions of the protective rubble cap that were originally installed on this, on the main have been dislodged. This is a project where we're seeking a FEMA grant, but we don't know if we'll get that, and we need to start making plans to replace this. So kind of Plan B would be to fund it with an SRF loan. So those are the things that we're focusing on for wastewater. And on to storm water. We're, I guess, sort of also in the middle of the pack, a little bit below average for Montana. As of 2023, we're charging about $4.90 per month to the average residential customer for storm water. I want to talk about how we would use the money if stormwater rates are approved. Probably our biggest project we're working on right now is to construct a bitteret outfall project. This is an $800,000 project funded with a combination of an ARPA grant and a state revolving fund or SRF loan, which would improve our largest storm drain outfall. This outfall discharges some pretty dirty water to the already impaired bitteret river. We also want to provide matching funds for multiple grant-funded projects, including one at Tekeema Park, which the image in the upper right shows a schematic of the proposed improvements. This project will be funded primarily through an EPA grant that we This project will be funded primarily through an EPA grant that we partnered with the University of Montana on, but it does require matching funds. Other matching fund projects, Library Green Roof is a project we're working on, and then there's a host of other projects through this UMEPA Green Infrastructure Grant. Then the other thing we're hoping to accomplish with the stormwater rate increase is to expand our ability to maintain green infrastructure. The photo to the right is an example of the type of work that our crews do. This is installing an erosion control blanket on a disturbed slope. So I want to talk a little bit about how we determine how much revenue each utility requires so that we can decide if we need a rate increase or not. So we use a tool called the Financial Pro forma, and we prepare these documents for each of the utilities. The pro forma forecasts revenues and operating and capital expenditures that will be required over the next five years. It tracks both the utility enterprise funds as well as the water and wastewater development funds and the loan funds. So we use this pro forma to demonstrate compliance with financial metrics. The most important metric that we look at is the debt service coverage. This is required by our lending institutions like the state revolving fund. These entities require us to demonstrate that we have net revenue available for debt service that is at least 1.25 times our actual debt service. So our bond rating agencies also require us to maintain adequate financial reserves to ensure that we can continue to meet these debt service obligations. So the image on the right is a credit rating that we received from Standard and Poor's. I apologize, I'm sure you can't read it, but the agency gave us an A-plus rating but with a negative outlook. S&amp;P is concerned that we may not be able to maintain adequate reserves in the future, which is a big reason why we're asking for these rate increases. And then the other metric that we use in our pro forma is, this is more of an internal policy, that we want to maintain 120 days of cash on hand based on kind of our average So getting to the, I guess, what I'm asking for tonight. This slide shows the proposed rate increases for the next three years for wastewater, water, and stormwater. And these are the increases that we need in order to meet the financial metrics that I talked about in the previous slide, as well as to provide the resources we need for the maintenance activities and the projects that I've already discussed. So the increases are shown are both a percentage increase as well as in a monthly dollar amount for a typical single-family residential customer. So the rates would increase for all customer classes by the same percentage. And the bottom line in yellow shows that with the proposed increases for 2025, the average residential customer would pay about a little over $4 a month more towards our water, wastewater, and stormwater bills. And in '26, it would be nearly $5 a month more, and then '27 would be about $5.33 per month more on the average bill. Since our initial presentation to the Public Works Committee, there have been some great questions from city council about what programs we have in place to assist low-income customers. So this slide summarizes the programs that we do have in place. The first program is the low-income discount, and this is for water accounts only. So anyone eligible for the LIHEAP program, as determined by the Human Resources Council, is also eligible for the low-income discount. The low-income discount has been $7 per month since before the city took over the water utility. So admittedly, it was probably an oversight that previous rate increases that we did not increase the discount accordingly. So we propose to catch up with prior rate increases and increase the discount by the same total percentage, which would bring up the discount to $8.50 per month in FY25. And then we propose to increase it to nine and a quarter a month and then $10 a month for '26 and '27, roughly matching the percentage increases for the water that we're asking for water. The next program is one that was recently modified by city council. We have had a loan program for water line repairs or replacements in place previously, but this year, we requested that the council amend the program to make up to $3,000 of the loan amount forgivable for cases where there's a leaking service line that is replaced. This isn't available for a simple Band-Aid repair, so we're trying to incentivize people to replace these old lines instead of just patch them. Eligibility for the water loans is not income-based, but a customer cannot own multiple properties in Missoula County and be eligible. And then lastly, we do have a new sewer loan program for repairs, replacements, or connecting septic systems to the sewer, and this one is for low-income customers only. So this chart is a comparison of our current and proposed monthly rates with the rates charged by the other six large cities in Montana on the left. So it's 2024 on the left, increasing to 2027 on the right. So again, it shows that we do have the lowest overall rates in Montana as of 2024. And one thing I want to point out is, you know, we're asking for three years with the rate increases. Kalispell, they're the sort of tallest bar there. You can see they've requested multiple-year rate increases, but the other cities don't. They do rate increases a year at a time. So we haven't tried to guess what these other communities are going to do with their rates. Everybody but Butte raised their rates in '24, and we're pretty confident that they're going to continue having to do that because they're seeing the same cost increases that we are. But this graph doesn't reflect any increase for those other utilities because we don't know what they're planning to do. So I guess what it shows is, out through 2027, we're still going to be well below the average in Montana, far below some like Kalispell. You know, depending what other cities do, we may continue to be the lowest in Montana, or, you know, we're going to be right in there with what our peers in Montana are So just want to talk about what would happen if the rate increases are not approved. You know, we would continue to perform necessary maintenance, but many capital improvements would need to be deferred for all the utilities. Our water leakage rates would likely start back on an increase. Our customers would likely experience reduced levels of service, and we would have to consider staff reductions. We would run into risks of permit compliance issues with our wastewater and stormwater discharge permits. Our fund reserves would likely dip below the levels required by our lending institutions and our rating agencies. And deferred maintenance can lead to system failures, impacts the surface and groundwater quality, and ultimately endanger public health. A good example is that Clark Fork River Sewer Crossing project shown again on the right. This pipe is highly susceptible to damage from scour during even a modest event like a 10-year flood. So this project is really critical for us to complete as soon as we can. So just kind of remind you of the calendar process for these rates. This is all dictated by state law. We're nearing the end of the process. You know, we started out a little over a month ago with the presentation of Public Works Committee. We've sent out postcards to every customer in late September. We've had several public notices as sort of required by the state law, and we've also updated our Engage Missoula page with information. So here we are tonight at the public hearing stage, and I believe council can act as soon as tonight if you choose to. And the rates would go into effect on January 1st of 2025. So with that, I'd like to hear any questions you might have.
Excellent. Mr. McGinnis, thank you for such a comprehensive presentation. Really appreciate that. We will turn it over to questions from council, and I see that Counselor Jordan, you have your hand raised, and then we'll move next to Counselor Campbell. Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Mr. McGinnis. I just want to say, first of all, with a comment, I'm really excited to see the city implementing green stormwater infrastructure. It's really exciting, and I think it's something that'll really benefit Missoulians going into the future, so that was really exciting to hear. I have a question about Slide 16 where you outline all of the increases. Thank you. And my question is, are the increases, like, so for the increase in 2017, is that, does that include the $4.92 increase? So does that mean that the increase for 2027 is 33 plus 8 cents, which is 41 cents? Or are those increases every year? Does that make sense?
Yes, and yes, they are. They're additive.
Okay. Sorry, just to make sure I understand, every year, it's going to, like, 2025 is going to go up $4.18, 2026 is going to go up $4.92, and 2027 is going to go up $5.33?
That's correct.
Thank you. And I just, Madam Mayor, I don't know if this is the right time to ask this, but I'm also wondering if I can just put out there and get a response from you if we can separate the increases and vote on them separately.
Separate for each of the utilities?
Yeah.
Hmm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look over to CAO Dale Bickel, is that okay? Yep, getting a nod. Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you. Those are all my questions and comments. Thank you, Logan.
Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, thank you very much for that presentation. I'm just curious, I missed it maybe during committee, but why did we opt to go with a three-year timeframe for rate increases? As you mentioned, some of the other cities do it year by year, but we're opting to do a three-year chunk at a time. And how did we arrive at doing it like that?
That's a good question. It's what we did in the last round, so I think we just sort of continued that practice. I don't know if I have a really good answer, you know, we just want to be able to kind of plan long-term. You know, we plan capital out several years, and so, you know, these projects take multiple years to complete, so I think it takes time to get our SRF loans lined up. You know, our reserves have kind of been sort of marginal, so, you know, they've been pushing us to get rate increases, so, you know, I think, so we just, we need to get these rate increases up so that we can continue to get, you know, loans to do the work that we need to do. Why three years versus two or four? I don't have a very scientific answer. It's just, it's what we did before. There's a, you know, a fair bit of work goes into this process. We just signed a PO for $12,000 for a postcard, that if we do that every year, then we're paying $12,000 a year to just send postcards out. So I think there's, we feel like there's just some economies of scale, the level of effort that goes into this, the costs and time that go into it, and then just sort of being able to tell our lenders that, look, we have this series of rate increases in place to build those reserves up. That helps convince them of, yes, we should loan you more money.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. I do believe that Mr. Bickel could also add to that a little bit?
Yeah, I just wanted to build a little bit on what Logan said, Dale Bickel, Chief Administrative Officer, and it's really, you know, I would focus that really on the capital investments required. You know, Logan mentioned the deferred maintenance and capital and building that program up in order to get it to where we need it to be. It's a fair chunk, as you see in the size of the rate increases, so this is able to get that in a phased-in basis and get it up to where it's predictable to for our lenders and our long-term capital planning to understand what we're going to do and how to prioritize.
Thank you, Mr. Bickel. Appreciate that. Counselor Campbell?
I think that's all for now. Thank you.
You bet. Counselor Vasika.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions, so I'm just going to keep rolling unless you cut me off. I was just doing some quick math here, and I guess, so currently, the average residential customer has a bill of about, is it $62.92 a month?
Let me bring that slide back up. This slide's a little different because we used, for this slide, we actually used our average, oh no, this was the 6,000. So, yeah, in 2024, this slide shows that it's $60.19.
Okay, so $60, okay, so $60.19. All right, so if we add the increase for all of it from 2025, 2026, 2027, that's an increase of, what, 14.43? Sorry, I'm doing some quick math here. That's $74.62, and that's times 12. So in 2027, the total average residential bill per year is going to be almost $900. I just want to make sure my math is right on that. Sorry, that was more of a comment. But my questions are, I guess, what is the bare amount of increases, the bare minimum of increases to satisfy just the debt service requirement?
I don't know off the top of my head. We would have to go back to our pro forma and sort of zero, you mean to say we're not going to do any more capital? We just want to keep the lights on?
Yeah, just to make the lenders happy, I guess. So we don't default. But I guess if we don't have the number off the top of the head, then that's fine. I guess my, I see Dale's hands up, and then I just have one more question.
The current rates support the debt issuances we have now, so we are in compliance with our covenants. Logan did mention in the letters we did get on, you know, we have an A-plus rating on the water utility bonds, but we have a negative outlook, and that's because we haven't had a rate increase in some time, and that's what, they're looking at that risk. So it's not just, you know, the bond compliance and the actual compliance with the covenants is only one part of the story. It's about the stewardship of the utilities as well. So if, for example, if the council decided that we're not going to raise rates and we're going to cut back on capital, even though we're maintaining our covenants, that's going to be seen as a credit negative, and that will affect our future borrowing costs to do that because we're going to, it's going to increase the risk of managing the utility and types of infrastructure failures that Logan talked about. So if that helps answer that question. So it's hard to say that just maintaining the compliance, we have to do that. In fact, to the point where we have to actually cut in other operational areas in order to maintain those covenants, so we, you know, by covenant, we are going to ensure our bond compliance. It's the cutting back on investments that is also a risk.
Okay, that does help answer that. I really appreciate it. Thank you. My final question is, how much money do we still owe for litigation from acquiring the water company? And if we do still owe on that, does that money come from the Water Enterprise Fund?
Mayor, I can answer that. Yeah, so when the acquisition occurred in 2017, all of the costs related to the acquisition, including the acquisition of the facility, legal costs, any of the other settlement issues were put into that particular bond issue, that short-term bond was refinanced to our current long-term bond that was refinanced in 2019. So that 2019 bond issue, which was a 20-year bond, covers all of the acquisition costs that were incurred during the condemnation process. So once that bond is paid off, that is a significant piece that will free up utility revenues, but that won't be done until 2039.
Okay, and off the top of your head, do you know about roughly how much is left on that?
I will look, you know, rather than just guess, I will look that up and just state that here in a couple of minutes.
Okay, thank you, and I'm all finished. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you bet. Thank you, Mr. Bickel. Thank you, Counselor Vasika. Counselor Carlino.
Thanks. I had three questions, I think. I was, well, looking at this, it looks like since 2021, it's a total 50% increase between combined rates, and I'm wondering if we're ever expecting for rates to be able to go down in the future or if it's going to be forever increasing, like, for example, if we fix leaks or pay off our bonds or... Like, for example, if we fixed leaks or paid off our bonds or something like that, would there be some indication in the future that we'd be able to act to lower rates at some point?
Hard to say. You know, if, as we replace leaks, you know, our power bill is about a million and a half bucks a year. And so if we can get to a point where our leakage rate is manageable, certainly that aspect, you know, that could go down. That's our goal. You know, obviously inflation just happens, so our costs of running this business are gonna continue to grow at least at the rate of inflation. So I guess I'd be pretty surprised if we ever reduce our rates. Certainly, I would hope we get to a point where we can sort of reduce the rate that we're, you know, go to, for smaller increases that are more sort of inflationary in nature. That'd be a goal I would hope we could achieve. But, you know, we just, we have tens of miles of water and sewer mains that should be replaced today. And it, as much, you know, most three miles a year, it just, we just got a lot of work to do to bring this infrastructure up to a point where we think it's stable and can last, you know, for many years. So.
And then I just had one other question. Thanks for increasing the low-income program by $3. And I was wondering if there was a, if during this process would be the time for council to propose increasing that amount or if we would want to do that at a separate, through a separate resolution? I think like ideally, the low-income program would match however much we've been increasing the rates by. But would today be a good time to propose that or do you think we should work on it through a different resolution?
I, you know, it's gonna be in the utility rate schedule that we're gonna adopt. So we were proposing to just make the change as we publish it. So I think if you want a different number, I mean, I think it's reasonable to do it through the same action.
Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I have a few questions, if that's okay. You did say this, we will still be the lowest overall water rate in Montana? I just wanna...
Not, our water rates are not the lowest, but you know, the lowest combined...
Combined utility rates, that's what I mean, yeah. Sorry, I'm, you're saying, I'm just thinking of water overall. So the combined utility rates would be the lowest in Montana.
Well, we are today.
Today.
So this graph that I've put up there with our proposed rate increase for 25, I think we might be just a hair over Great Falls.
Okay. And we don't know some of them because they haven't come in yet.
Right, yeah. We're assuming Great Falls is gonna raise, they raised their rates this year. I would imagine they're gonna raise them for 2025, too. So I, yeah.
Right. So in the state, we're doing pretty well.
Yeah, I think we're doing pretty well. And nationally, we're doing really well, too.
Thank you. May I just keep going? And with the S&amp;P, A-plus is a good rating. I worked in this world for, for a while. But a negative outlook is a negative outlook and it's something that they, you know, that's money, too, right? Because that means our interest rates will potentially go up. We talk about this in lots of, lots of different capacities in the city about how having a good, good rating is, is really important. It's important, so we're not spending more money. It saves money to have a good rating. So the interest rates would go up if we dropped a B or C or whatever. Am I right? Correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. And then the, you know, we know pumping excess water is just a giant, giant energy waste. I mean, that is my thing, getting solar, pumping less water because of all of our climate goals. But you mentioned the cost of a leak. And to me, every time I hear the cost of a leak, I think climate, climate-related numbers because we do, we all use a lot of water in this city. But you're talking about the operational cost, is that correct?
Yeah, that's just to pay the power company and to buy chemicals. That's all that $1,000 a year is for a 10-gallon a minute leak. So it certainly doesn't, you know, external costs like climate impacts and things definitely are not, not included in that.
Yeah. I'd love to see at some point how, kind of what, what our, our greenhouse gas emissions have changed over the years. I'd love to see that, but not right now. May I ask one more question? So as far as work planning, you know, doing the multiple-year rate increase, I know you said that you've just done that in the past because this is how we've done it. But how does that affect, if we were to do it year by year, how would that affect kind of work planning and projects? Because I imagine, let me just say, you, you replaced a water main on my street and it took a long time. But I mean, we're, we're work planning, right? So I mean, these are big projects, some of them. Is that correct?
Yes, and every project is really a multiple-year endeavor. It's just crazy how long it can take to go from realizing a water main needs to be replaced to hiring an engineer to start planning, to working with the DEQ and the SRF to get a loan, to then bidding it out. I mean, we're still working, like the projects, we had a project meeting today and all the projects were, our project numbers start with the year that the project started, and these projects were all 2021 projects. So we're, we're doing, we're still finishing up 2021's projects and 22's and 23's and 24's, and we've got engineers designing 25's. And we're already kind of starting to look at, okay, what's the next list for 26? So it's, it's just kind of crazy how long it can take to get these projects done. So, you know, we're gonna continue planning if you only approve one-year rate increase. I mean, we're gonna continue planning further out, and we, we have to because it just, it takes that long. I just, it's kind of these other costs like the postcard and just kind of the efforts of kind of the hearings and the calculations and the PowerPoints and all the stuff that goes into doing this, so.
Thanks. And you reminded me of one thing as I was looking at that pipe underneath the river and thinking about, I've seen kind of catastrophic water failures in a water system, and it blew a hole in a road that I was driving on, actually, and it was pretty, pretty impressive. Not a sewer system, but that pipe under the Clark Fork, I mean, what, what are our, I mean, DEQ has some requirements that we have to meet, and I, I don't understand how that plays into it, but like what would happen if we started having major leakage or a catastrophic failure underneath the river?
It'd be, I mean, it would be catastrophic. Like, we would have to figure out a way to set up bypass pumps, you know, string sort of a big pipe along the Reserve Street Bridge and then back along. I mean, it would be, it would cost us millions just to recover from just the thing breaking, let alone the millions it would cost to sort of come up with a long-term fix. So we definitely want to get this done. We don't want to have to figure out what happens when the pipe breaks. Like, we want to have plans in place. And it's, there's not easy answers to it, unfortunately. It's, you know, the DEQ, like you said, has requirements. It's supposed to be buried at least, I forget, six feet or something under the riverbed, and it's basically exposed in the riverbed. It originally was buried, but the river's downcutting through there. So, I mean, it's, we can't put another gravity pipe there because it's already basically on minimum grade. It flows in at kind of where it needs to flow into the wastewater plant. So it's gonna be a new, probably a new pump station and new force mains run under the river. You know, we'll look at hanging it off the bridge, but we've already kind of been told that MDT wouldn't allow that. So it's, the work is ongoing there. We've, we got a small grant to do a preliminary engineering study. We've applied for a FEMA grant, so we're kind of doing everything we can do to move that along. It is scary.
Yeah, no doubt. Let's see. I think I saw Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, sorry, I thought of another question, and it's just a curiosity one. Mr. McGinnis, on one of your slides, I can't remember which one it was, but you showed a really significant increase in leakages in 2017, and I'm curious what caused that because that was impressive. Or was it 2021? Sorry.
Yeah, so I guess the short answer is COVID happened. You know, we took over from the city in 2017, started making some kind of modest improvements. Like I was complaining about earlier, it takes time to get projects done. So we, it's not like we came right out of the gates and started replacing miles of main. But 2020 happened and we couldn't do anything for basically a year in terms of, of main replacements. So, yeah, it was pretty astounding how, how much ground we lost that year by not replacing any mains. You know, we were limited, we couldn't, we couldn't even have crews in a trench to replace leaks. I mean, obviously, if something was catastrophic, we found a way to deal with it. But it just, it really impacted kind of the day-to-day work that, that we could do, plus just the, you know, we couldn't do replacements for that kind of whole year. So, yeah, we lost a lot of ground, but fortunately, we've, we've caught up and I think we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you.
You bet. You bet. Counselor Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one more question. So for years two and three, as is laid out on the graph in here, I'm just wondering, understanding that, of course, you're looking for your costs for ongoing maintenance, for improvements to the system that you're forecasting that'll take place over the next three years or two to three years to arrive at a number of, for a rate increase for those two years. I'm just wondering, to what extent are you figuring or calculating what, you know, the economic forecast is going to be in that regard in terms of, you know, what we've seen the past three years, you know, from the economic standpoint with interest rates, with inflation? And to the extent that you factor that in for the next two years? And do you have confidence in that you're meeting what, you know, you feel would be the, you know, the economic conditions of, say, a fiscal year 27?
Yeah, that's a very good question. That's, obviously, we like the idea of a multi-year rate increase because it gives us certainty to move forward, but it does introduce risks, right? That if we're, we're way off and then we didn't, you know, we certainly plan for inflation. And I don't, Rebecca, I don't know if you know numbers off the top of your head, but 3%, that's what I, yeah, so we plan on kind of 3% inflation. And, you know, nothing says if, if we're totally wrong, obviously, we could come back to you, like, and ask for additional rate increase. I certainly don't intend to do that, don't, you know, hope that we don't have to do it, but that, that could be a fallback. If, if inflation goes through the roof again and the 3% isn't meeting our needs, then that, that's kind of, that would be the fallback position.
Thank you.
You bet. Absolutely. Thanks for all the good questions from council members. Are there any additional questions for Mr. McGinnis? Not seeing any here. All right. So then that wraps up our council questions. We'll move on to the series of motions, and we'll do three separate motions.
The first motion, I'm gonna be creative here since I've got them all together. Approve a resolution of the municipal, sorry, approve a resolution of the Missoula City Council increasing the municipal stormwater rates for the City of Missoula Utility System and amending the utility rate schedule to be effective January 1st, 2025. The second, approve a resolution of the Missoula City Council increasing the wastewater utility rates for use of the City of Missoula Utility Systems and amending the utility rate schedule to be effective January 1st, 2025. Third, approve a resolution of the Missoula City Council increasing the water utility rates for the use of the City of Missoula Utility System and amending the utility rate schedule to be effective January 1st, 2025.
All right. Thank you very much, President Cheryl, for those. That, the motions are on the floor before we open it up to public comment. Mr. Bickle has the answer to Counselor Vasika's question.
Yes, at, at the end of last calendar year, and the audit under, that is available on our website, we have about $92 million remaining of the original $119 million that was borrowed to fund the acquisition. So, and then that will be paid off by 2045, I see here.
Okay. Thank you much, Mr. Bickle. I know that number sounds like a lot. I will say, though, that one of the reasons that we've been able to put so much investment back into the system is because that's exactly where the profit is going, is actually into the system and not paying off shareholders. A little story I'll mention, and I just talked with the Boise, the mayor of Boise and learned about the system that they're doing, which is to recycle their wastewater. They have a utility, or excuse me, an investor-owned utility in Boise, and they have an arid system similar to Missoula. They can't control their domestic potable water use because it's an investor-owned utility, but they can recycle their wastewater into commercial uses. And so that's one way they're able to keep their water rates down, but they had to make a substantial investment in order to do that. So I felt very fortunate for where we are in Missoula today. All right. This opens up our public comment. So anybody wishing to comment on this agenda item, you're welcome to come on up. We'll start with those folks in the room and we'll give you, offer you an opportunity for three minutes. Come on up.
I'm Chris Palornas. I'm with the International Fluid Analysts. And the thing that I'm concerned about is to give a three-year increase without an oversight each year to see what progress has been made or not, what money is being spent properly or not. In every good operation, you know, you should have something overseeing. So, because that's a lot of money to a lot of the people, to my home, to, you know, people like that. So I'm just wondering why there isn't an oversight committee looking at each year, even if you grant three years down? Make sure that each year, everything is done efficiently. And they're spending the money properly. Or just give them all the way up to $14 and say, well, you know, you messed up here, you messed up here, you messed up here, but we gave you the money. You know, in the business I'm in, in remediation, that's a lot of money.
Get that out of your face. Thanks, Logan.
Spell it on the floor. So that's, that's what I think that it wasn't entertained at all. You were getting there, but, you know, why don't every year we have an oversight committee to see what's going on? What's the water like? What are the leaks like? Why is there? Is it something in the water? There's a lot of things that can be done in spending that money. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Any other public comment this evening?
I'd like to see a map, McKay, Montana, Spitzmacher, S-P-I-T-Z-M-A-C-H-E-R. Like to see a map of our water infrastructure that's deteriorating and where possibly the bombshells might drop in that will stick the budget that this piece of pipe needs to be replaced now. I want to see that map where the pipes are replaced and the ones that are possibly the most terrorizing that will drop the big bombshell call, we're gonna stick it to the budget, whether you like it or not. And the ones that possibly could be set forth, because when you shut off the water in the neighborhood and you got a major project going on, people would be aware of the possible extremity that could possibly happen within the next, how many years? And be grateful that the city has taken over the water works program because I was up at the library with the mayor's presentation of what the problems were going to be foresighted and how to manage them. And like you said, you're not paying a dividend check to the greedy ones that don't, we don't care, we don't live in Missoula.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Spitzmacher. Other members of the public wishing to make public comment this evening?
Robert Dunlap, 2013, West Kent, HAV. I want to compliment you for a good presentation, and I want to compliment the city council, all of you, for asking the questions that were on a lot of people's minds about this. I am certified by the state of Montana as a water treatment and distribution operator. I keep my CECs current, but I don't practice. It's nice to have a three-year plan, but my concern is the same as the first speaker's. The lack of oversight over those three years, just give them, it's nice to have a three-year plan, but I think you should check every year and say, what's the progress on this? Where are we falling short? Where are we making gains? That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Other members of the public wishing to make comment on this agenda item? agenda item? I don't see any in the room here. How about online? I see a, Steve Ellison. Steve, can you unmute your phone there and join us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I just had a comment, I believe it was slide 17 of the combined utility rates. And, and basically, my comment, and it's sort of similar with the two comments you've already received, when I look at that, it looked like maybe from 2011 up to about 2021, maybe for a 10-year period there, the rates were very stable, but maybe not increased as much as they should have, in terms of what was needed, in terms of repair and replacement. So, but then from 2021 on, just looking at the curve, it does look like maybe we're trying to make up for the under rate in, say, five years as opposed to 10. So I'm just looking at the steepness of that curve, and it looks pretty sharp to me. So I guess, I guess my comment is sort of in line with what they were, others were saying, is that maybe a one or two year at these kinds of rates, and then see what happens, because for the 10, it almost looks to me like we, you need a longer seven, eight, nine, 10-year period to make up for the 2011 through 21 10-year period where maybe rates weren't increased enough. So that would be one comment. And my other, I guess, is a question. When we increase the rates by 9%, does that go equally between the, the basic charge and the usage rate, or is there some distinction?
Mr. Ellison, I'm getting a, a positive nod from Mr. McGinnis that the 9% is applied equally to the two charges.
Okay, I guess my comment there would be, I would hope that there would be some sort of distinction in terms of usage. You know, it's how much water goes through the system. Well, you know, just the chemicals and things like that, that's a variable cost, and it seems to me like, to be equitable, somebody that's using more water and flushing more water should maybe be paying a little bit more than somebody that's, that's not. And it, I have, I'm not, within his comparisons with other cities, there was, there was nothing between the basic charge and the other charge. Some of, and I'm not familiar, but it seems like, it just seems to me that the basic charge is fairly high, and that maybe we should look at some sort of allocation to the variable charge and try to match that with what our variable costs are going to be.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ellison.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking them.
You bet. Any other members of the public online that wish to make public comment on this item tonight? Any of the three motions? All right. I'm not seeing any other public comment online, and we'll bring it back to city council and see if there are any council comments or additional questions. Not seeing any in the room here? Oh, yep. Counselor Carlino?
Yes. Yeah, I'm really glad that the city owns our own water utility and that, you know, all these increases are going towards helping make it better and rather than going towards maximizing people's profits. I think where all this money is going to is to a really good cause and help on the community. But I am concerned about the cost of living going up in Missoula and how this might affect people with the 50% increase between, you know, 2021 and now. So I'd like to propose one amendment to the low-income assistance program. I would like to just add, or just amend it to have the low-income assistance program allow ratepayers to pay 2021 residential rates if they qualify for that lowest, low-income assistance program, rather than the up to $10 that it'll be at the end of this year. Have them just pay the, the rates before we started increasing.
All right. So I'll look to Counselor Sherrill. There is an amendment for, no, I'm sorry. Counselor Carlino, is this for all three utilities?
What does this qualify for? Could you clarify? The, it's for the low-income assistance program?
Yeah, that's only for the water.
It's only for the water. Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you. Great. Okay. So, so Counselor Sherrill, the amendment is on the floor or being proposed. And back to you.
Yeah, thanks. So I think at this point that we need to just ask questions about the amendment, and I, I'm not accepting that as a friendly amendment. I think it's not even, you know, it's, it's something that's being brought to us by staff. So I do have a question about it, though.
Yeah, that sounds fair.
Logan, I'm curious if you would come up. I've got a question for you. So, could you explain how the lower income program works and how that is subsidized by other ratepayers, I'm assuming, and then what the rates, if we did that, do you have any sense of what the rates for, the increase for everyone else would be to, I mean, that's, that's how the program works, right? It's hard to know how many.
We did look it up. I don't remember the number. There's maybe a couple hundred people utilize the program. So if it's 200 people, it's seven bucks a month. I mean, that kind of tells you how much it's costing sort of everybody else. I mean, that's, you're right, that's where the money is coming from, is, is others are subsidizing it. You know, one thing nice about it, the way it is now, it's just a flat dollar amount. It's seven bucks a month. And so to try to like roll it back to some, like to 2021, everybody uses a different amount of water, right? Like, you get charged for the water that you use. And so, you know, the billing system is set up where everybody pays the same, whatever, it's $2.18 per CCF. And so to go to those couple hundred customers and say, you're going to pay based on the 2021 CCF rate, I don't know if our, I mean, Mercedes is here, she's our CIS expert. I don't know if that can be done in our billing system. So, I mean, there are complications. That's, the way it is now, it's, it's pretty easy. It's just X dollars a month off your bill. And, you know, to raise that flat amount, I think it's pretty easy to, in the billing system, to change it to 10 bucks or 11 bucks. But to, to, so I guess, you know, we would have to have a different monthly rate if we want to match the 2021 rates, a different CCF rate that those 200 accounts would pay. I just, I don't know that, I think it'd be pretty complicated from a billing standpoint. I'm getting nods from our experts that that may not work, or maybe complicated, I guess. Okay.
I don't, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Sherrill. And Counselor Jones?
Kind of to follow up on what Ms. Sherrill was saying, I don't know if you can answer this or other staff, but if, if this is changed, it sounds like 200 ratepayers is not a lot, but you've based all of your calculations on a holistic analysis. Does that, if this changes, does that impact, normally, this would be made up by other ratepayers.
Right.
I don't think we're gonna, I wish something like this had been discussed in committee instead of on the Monday night, we're trying to finalize it, because it's all based on math and it's all interconnected. But are you able to answer, if this is changed, does that affect your entire outlook in terms of projects, bond rating, et cetera?
I mean, I guess my sense is that we're not talking about a big impact to us financially, just because it's a small number of customers. You know, it's kind of, it's sort of baked in to the revenue that, you know, we use sort of last year's revenue to kind of forecast next year's revenue. So it's, you know, it's, it's already kind of baked in there. You know, the couple bucks that we said we would add to it, you know, I'm, I'd be lying if I said we went back to the pro forma and recalculated to those, is that $400 a month going to make a big difference to us? No, we didn't, we didn't go look at it. I mean, obviously, the bigger, the bigger it gets, then I think we do need to go back to our pro forma and say, well, what kind of impact does this have on everybody else's bill? So, I mean, it's, I don't think we're talking really big dollars that are going to move the needle a long ways. But it's something we probably should look at if we're going to expand it significantly.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Carlino.
Yeah, it sounded like the wording of my amendment, bringing it back to 2021 rates, would cause complications. So I would just propose withdrawing that amendment and then proposing that we make it $25, which was the average residential rate increase instead. So just moving to amend that we have a low-income assistance program go up to $25 rather than the up to $10 as currently proposed. I think that would be, make it easier rather than, you know, trying to say 2021 rates based off of what staff just said. So I just wanted to move that language around, but it's the same, same proposal.
Okay. So the amendment is that there would be a low-income discount of $25 off the bill every month, starting for FY '25. And we're starting currently, historically, we've been at $7 a month. So it'd be an increase of $18 a month.
Correct. And I got that number for, because that's how much we've increased the, the average bill since 2021. So that, yeah, that's the amendment.
That's the amendment? Okay. So a new amendment is on the floor. Any council members have any questions? And I, I'm sure Logan is here to help answer those. Counselor Jones?
All right. So if it's 25 instead of seven, times 200 per month for 12 months, is this something that you're able to give us a solid answer on in this situation tonight, if that's going to work for your business plan that you basically come up with? It looks like someone looks to help you.
Throw a lifeline to Mr. Bickel.
So I did really back the napkin math. That, that would translate, based on the 200 customers, the difference between the $25 and the $7 would be 40, just over $43,000 annually. So I would, at that amount, you know, the total water utility budget is about $20 million. I don't think it would, I don't think it would impact any of the planning related to the use of the rates.
Did you have more to add, Logan, or?
No, I just was going to point out that, you know, not everybody has a $25. Like, some people might, I mean, I assume you wouldn't want to set it up that they actually get money back. But, I mean, some people, they, you know, the monthly meter charge is about 17 bucks. And, you know, the average, obviously, a lot of months, people in the winter using way less than the average. So, you know, a lot of these folks, probably most of the year are going to be paying zero, you know, assuming you're not getting a, giving them an actual credit.
Thank you for that.
Just pointing that out.
Yep. Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Anderson?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. My question for Logan is, the $7 is the current program. I mean, what were some of the calculations that went into coming to that number? And if I heard you correctly in your presentation previously, you are planning on taking a look at the low-income pro, as a part of your overall comprehensive rate study that you're planning on undertaking upcoming, correct?
I didn't say that, but that does make sense. Yes, we're planning a rate study. It makes sense to look at, you know, what kind of low-income programs, you know, we could implement it. You have to be a little cautious. You know, state law basically says we have to charge folks, you know, equitable rates. And so, I mean, I think we're, you know, when you're sort of making your neighbors pay for the, the difference, you have to be a little careful. Like, is that, you know, is that going to be viewed by everybody as, as equitable? So I, I think there are concerns about, you know, how the state law, I'm not a lawyer, so I shouldn't even be speculating, but I think it's, it is a concern.
Yes.
About these programs. But yes, we for sure would want to look at that in a, in our next rate survey. Where it came from, I, it's been seven bucks a month for a long time. It was, it was a mountain water program, and, and we just maintained it. So I don't know where the $7 number came from.
Thank you for that information. I have to say, I didn't, I didn't know that there was a legal requirement around equitable rates. That would make sense. And so, Mr. Sudbury, I see that you're online. If you have any additional information to share, that would be great. Understood that you might not have that piece of research at your fingertips, but if you do.
Yeah, Ryan Sudbury, City Attorney's Office. Logan and I have talked about this previously, and, and I think he summarized it pretty well. It's, the state law is about one sentence that says, the rates need to be equitable across category. I can, I could look it up and get that language. But, but Logan summarized it pretty well. And it's, you know, we kind of fly into the radar with a couple hundred people getting a small allowance per month off their bill. You know, to the extent that that, or magnitude of that charge grows, it could increase the potential for legal challenge on that front. You know, I think we could craft a, a fairly good defense of it, but the larger that balloon gets, the less equitably the costs are spread, even if it's for a good program like that, then we start to get to, we, we start to run into problems both with the way our fee structure is run, and then we run into problems with Supreme Court, Montana Supreme Court precedent with respect to whether a fee is really a fee or whether it's a tax that the city is not allowed to do. And when fees for services like water, sewer, are promoting sort of general benefit projects that are potentially more correctly funded out of the general fund, that's gonna, that's gonna raise the ire of the Supreme Court for running afoul of the, of our ability to levy taxes in that manner. So there are a couple of things, and Logan and I have talked about Counselor Carlino's original proposal, and felt like, you know, it was a relatively small magnitude, and, and we could create a pretty good defense of it, and wouldn't think it would raise too many red flags. But certainly, if you, if it, if it grows, then, then those, that consideration is less, or calculus changes, rather.
Okay. Thank you for that helpful context, Mr. Sudbury. Appreciate that. And Counselor Jones?
I just have a comment, so.
Sure.
So I appreciate this conversation, and it's a, a really great thought behind this amendment. But I, I would be far more comfortable having some analysis put into it. And I, I appreciate the city attorney weighing in, because that was my gut feeling, was there's got to be some parameters or sideboards around this. And sure enough, there are legally. I think it would be great to really fully explore this in the study that you're going to be starting this year, and then figure out some changes if necessary. But, so I appreciate the thought behind this amendment. But I think the $10, if typically these are $17 average bills, and there's a $10 knocked off of it, it's, it's, I think that's getting us to a better place. And if we can go further without upsetting the apple cart in terms of the legal sideboards that are around this, then maybe we can have that discussion down the road. So just wanted to put my thoughts out.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel, for bringing this forward. I think, and as we talk about affordable housing and, and thinking outside of the box, it's important to be creative and that this type of amendment and creative proposal, opposing, I guess, is the only word I can think of, is, is one of those ways that we can address affordable housing and think outside of the box. And, you know, I think that with a $25 increase, it'll address the future increases that we're going to see as well. And I just appreciate your creativity in trying to think of ways that we can ensure people can stay in the housing that they have when we're looking at such a critical houselessness issue, and also just have a lot of folks who live paycheck to paycheck. So I will definitely be voting in support of this. And just want to thank you for your creativity on thinking about how we can support affordable housing.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Counselor. Any other? Counselor Nugent?
Quick question for Logan. I've learned a lot more about this program than I really realized, and I do appreciate the conversation. What is the threshold? I mean, if somebody already talked about this, I apologize for missing it. But what is the threshold to be qualified for this program?
I don't know the percentages. Basically, you go to Human Resource Council, and if you're eligible for the low-income heating energy assistance program, then you're eligible for this. I just don't know what the income thresholds are for LIHEP.
Does everybody still have power? Okay. We had a little surge there, but I think we're still on. Mary, are we still okay over there? Okay. Claire, everything okay in the back?
We're still online.
All right. Well, ironically, while we're talking about energy and electricity, it's very important. very important, yeah? Yes, that's, I understand that, too, it's the low income home energy assistance program is the qualifications that have been adopted for this program.
Thanks. I, I appreciate this conversation, and, and I'm very open to the broader conversation around this idea with all of our utilities, but I'm a little bit worried that, I think there are people who don't qualify for LEAP that are definitely also living paycheck to paycheck, and the shifting that without really better data and kind of understanding why and the who needs it, especially if it might create situations where someone is getting a 100% of the metered fee covered. To me, that, that seems like we're, we're looking for a, a solution that, that isn't necessarily based entirely on data. So I do appreciate, I do appreciate this conversation, though.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, sorry, I apologize. I wanted to comment on why I wanted to separate them out, but also just add, I think based on what Mr. Nugent said, that, you know, we, we often make incredibly huge budget decisions without data, which includes our annual budget, which is something that I've been trying to work on to get program metrics attached to that since I started, just so that we can make more informed budgetary decisions. So we do definitely make decisions without all of the necessary data on a pretty regular basis. But I wanted to speak to why I wanted to separate them out, and it's just, you know, I have a feeling it's gonna be in vain, but I certainly do believe, particularly given my day job, that we just don't invest enough money in stormwater and wastewater, that as it stands, we're a pretty big polluter here in Missoula without even meaning to be, and that we need to start putting a bunch of money into our stormwater and our wastewater systems. And as far as the water rates go, I, and I just feel incredibly blessed, and I know nobody else, a lot of folks don't agree with this, but that we do own our own water supply. I think as we, you know, the longer we live in America, the more we see that everything's getting capitalized and it's for profit, and water is next. And we're gonna be really grateful that we own our own water supply. But in that same vein, I think that we have just put too much on taxpayers this year. I have had many constituents reach out to me about the increase in their water bill, and they're concerned about how they're gonna continue to pay their property taxes or their increased rental rates or their increased energy rates. And in owning our own utility, we can regulate that cost a bit more. And in the name of trying to address affordable housing in a creative way, I will be voting no to increase the wa, the water rate, but our wastewater and our stormwater infrastructure is, has been incredibly neglected. And as it stands now, without meaning to, we are polluting water downstream for folks on the, on the Clark Fork, and I would like to see us investing a lot into our infrastructure in that sense, so that we can keep our waters clean for everybody who's downstream. And, yeah, with that, I will be done. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome, and it sounds like we'll have our rate study. It sounds like Counselor Jordan, maybe our rates aren't high enough for both stormwater and wastewater. And I can say that Missoula did keep our wastewater rates down for a long time because we didn't want to increase the cost to residents, but that ended up then creating a negative impact in our ability to invest in capital. So that, that is just a, that's a matter of fact. It's something that we now have to catch up on, on our wastewater system. And it is, while we are not profiteering, but we are still obviously running a, a business type structure here, we have to make sure that we actually pay for capital moving forward. So thank you for that. And, you know, I think as part of our capital improvement planning, obviously, all three utilities come forward to City Council for budget every year, so that certainly serves as oversight. And this conversation can, I think, continue in terms of the way in which we are making investments and how those investments are best servicing our full community. So Counselor Carlino, I'll move to you, and then I do want to make sure we open it up to public comment on this amendment.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks for the conversation. I think a study seems like a good idea, but increasing people's rates by 50% and giving them $10 off is still increasing their rates. And we're talking about, with this amendment, we're talking about people that are low income, that are just trying to qualify for, for assistance to get their basic needs met. So I, I think we, as a council, could just decide to help give them more assistance right now. And if we think that other people need assistance, then we could, you know, expand that net, maybe make this qualify an AMI in the future. But I don't think those are reasons to not, you know, allow people assistance right now, which we have the authority to do so. And I just think, you know, water being a basic, basic need for everybody, I think, you know, we should be good stewards and try to help make it a right for everybody with the cost of housing and rent and our electric bills by Northwestern Energy going up so much, and our groceries, and then now the city increasing the water bills. Like, the cost to live in Missoula is just so high. Like, it's just way too high for everybody. So it would be great if we could, you know, at least do something like just passing this amendment to help low income people that are trying to get their basic needs met, like water.
All right, thank you for your comments, and we'll open it up to the public for public comments on the amendment. Again, the amendment is specifically to increase the low income discount up to $25 a month, which would be an increase of $18 a month, starting this year. Okay, come on up.
I just got one comment. Neglect costs money much more than the investment if you maintain it.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. Any other public comment on the amendment? Not seeing any in the room. How about online? Any public comment on the amendment? All right, not seeing any public comment on the amendment? Then we are, let's see, there is an amendment on the floor for the water rate, so we need to vote on that first, yeah, before we can move forward with the rest, because it's not a friendly amendment to the original.
We need to vote on the amendment first, I think.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Well, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote on Counselor Carlino's amendment. Ms. Trimble?
Okay, so this is a vote on the amendment to the water rate, that we're, as we're separating these into three categories, and I have phrased it as amend the low income water assistance program to a discount of up to $25 per month. So if that wording is acceptable to everybody, I'll do a roll call.
Looking around the room, I think it's acceptable to everybody? Okay.
Right, so beginning with Campbell.
No.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
No.
Jones?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
No.
Savage?
No.
Cheryl?
No.
Vasika?
No.
And Anderson?
No.
And that amendment fails with eight opposed and two in favor.
Okay, thank you very much for the discussion, really appreciate that. And we'll move forward then with the three motions, the original motions that are on the floor, then starting with the first motion, which is in regards to stormwater. Oh, and before we move, sorry, one, one quick moment, Counselor Jones?
Can I comment now? We diverted to the amendment.
Absolutely. Thanks for bringing me back on track. You bet, absolutely.
I'll keep it brief. I'm in support of these. We've definitely had some emails from folks who are concerned about extra costs. I appreciate that. I think we're always balancing that. But I did want to say that, first of all, because the city took over the water company, Liberty Algonquin was the most recent owner of the water company prior to the city taking ownership, and I just want people to be aware of the fact that the shareholders report that they shared with their shareholders said that every year they were going to be raising rates. So that is the value of having a municipality own their own water company. Huge, huge difference. So first of all, because of that, we are in a much lower rate scenario than we would have been otherwise. And it is, a commenter commented on, oh, now the curve is going up in terms of rates. There was a concerted effort to do the best we could to not have rates raised when we first took over the water company, because it was just such a big transition and shift to begin with. That we needed to stabilize everything, get everything set up, make sure it was all systems go, and now we are really starting to tackle the deferred maintenance and get to a sustainable place with that maintenance. I appreciated the public comment about who, who is the oversight committee for our water utility? It's us, it's City Council. We hear updates on a regular basis from the water utility and all of the utilities. We have a huge budget sessions in the summer where we go over those numbers, and with every project, they come in to us to review it, and then we have to authorize it and have the mayor sign it. So frankly, there's a lot of water utility and stormwater and wastewater discussion in this chambers, and I, I remember when Logan first came over from Mountain Water to work for the city, and we were all in this transition mode, and you made a comment when you were up at the podium about how, yeah, you have to come in and ask permission for every single thing now. It was a big change from having that private ownership, and it is true. That's, that's the way our system works, and that's the transparency and oversight. So I think this has been well thought out. I think we should continue the conversation in the next year or two in terms of, should we readdress our low income qualified folks? But I am all for having some more funds going to being, to be in a more sustainable place, not only for emissions issues, but we pull our drinking water from an aquifer, and I want to keep our sewer lines intact. So I think it's in everyone's best interest. There are many examples of communities that have deferred maintenance on their water infrastructure. It's easy to pull them up, and it goes bad pretty quickly if you don't stay ahead of that. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and am happy to vote yes on it.
Thank you for the historical context, I appreciate it. Counselor Vasika?
Thanks, and thank you, Counselor Jones, for your comments. It kind of led me right to my, beginning of my sentence where I want to state that I am really uncomfortable with deferred maintenance to infrastructure. Infrastructure is very important to a society. However, we have been increasing our property taxes every year, much higher than the rate of inflation, much higher than I believe that we need to. And public safety and infrastructure, as I've been saying my entire tenure on council, those are the main tenets of running a city, and we need to make those our main priority. Just as last year, Counselor Campbell and I proposed and failed in cutting over $2 million last budget season, so I, I'm under the impression that the city can find money for the things that we want, and we need to make infrastructure more of a want that, that we need to take care of. Increasing the average residential rate payer to pay almost $900 a, a year in 2027, when we're already struggling to keep roofs over our heads and groceries on the table, is something that I'm even more uncomfortable with. So even though I'm uncomfortable with deferring the maintenance, I'm even more uncomfortable with the price tag of it, so I'm, I'm unfortunately not gonna be in support tonight.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Vasika. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, we pay our water bill, we expect the faucet to turn on, we expect toilets to flush, we pay our stormwater, same of that, we expect stormwater not to back up on our city streets, but by the same token, you know, I share Counselor Vasika's concerns about the fact that this, you know, just a compounding effect on rising cost of owning a home, renting a place here in Missoula. I, I have a concern at the timing of this as well. And going back to budget season, aside from the amendments that were proposed, I mean, we have, I have it pulled up here, I'm looking at the ask of water, wastewater, stormwater, 35 projects altogether, granted, none of them are CIP projects that require ongoing funding, but we have, looking back here, you know, a new vehicle, we have solar arrays, we have contracted services, materials, building remodel, and, you know, all these things were passed under FY25 budget, so they're locked in, they're done, they're part of the FY25 game plan, but it would have been good to have the discussion we're having tonight concurrently with the FY25 budget, to where, you know, we look at this, I, I think it would change the complexion of discussion of our FY25 budget. I think we've changed the discussion, complexion of, of the amendments that were proposed by various people in council. So what we're left with is pass the FY25 budget. So now we're asking not only folks to, you know, hold their breath when they open their property tax bills, but now we're gonna ask them afterwards, after all that said and done, now we're gonna ask them to, well, hold on to your wallet because here comes a series of rate increases coming up. And with regard specifically to what's being proposed here tonight, I, I have some concerns about having this expanded out over three years. I think it would have been better to be doing this year by year. I, I do have concerns about accountability from year to year. I appreciate that Public Works puts out, you know, a, a status of, you know, what they've done the previous budget year, but I, I think those need to be more comprehensive, more ongoing, that more metrics be implemented, as far as what worked, what hasn't worked, you know, what the actual costs are. You know, I, I suspect from time to time, there are cost overruns with, you know, what we look at, you know, I could pull up any of the CIP projects, FY25, you know, what we think something's gonna cost as opposed to what it actually costs. And we've heard here tonight from staff, the idea that, yeah, maybe next year, we have to ask for more because of inflation, because of interest rates, or FY27 have to come back and add on. So, you know, it's not only that folks are looking at, you know, cumulatively through three years, 20, you know, 30% increase in, you know, these utility rates, but, you know, no guarantee that, okay, well, that, that's what the dollar's gonna be, you know, to the penny, that, no, next year depending on, you know, where we see where actual costs are, that we could in fact be asking more, and we could be back here yet again. I would hope going forward at least, you know, as we go into FY26, you know, next year, that, you know, we can have discussions like this for utility rate increases or any of our enterprises that the city decides to involve itself with, that we can have those discussions concurrent with budgets. So, you know, when something's approved, you know, we don't look and say, wow, we have 35 projects, okay, well, how are we gonna fund these? Well, we gotta look at a rate increase now. And doing that, you know, post-budget, I think is, I wouldn't say it's shady, but I, I, I think it's, it's problematic that, you know, to the general public that, you know, they expect, okay, we're getting hit with X amount, you know, 15% of property tax increase, and, you know, as Billy Mays would say, but wait, there's more, and that's kind of where we're at tonight. So, you know, for all those reasons, I will not be in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Campbell, and Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Couple things, I do think that, I understand the, the comments about doing it during the budget process, but we've been, this public hearing's been going for about an hour and a half, and I think nobody on council thinks that we would give this conversation an hour and a half worth of time during the budget process when there's so much other stuff going on. I think it's unrealistic. So I do think that there's, there's a good balance to have these conversations outside of that, because it can get more attention on its own. I just, just to counter to that, I, I always bring this up whenever we talk about enterprise funds, just in case there's somebody watching on MCAT for the first time, but I think it's important for people to know that enterprise funds are funded, are, are the funds in the city that are funded entirely by the users. So there is no property tax dollars going to anything with the water company, including the acquisition fees, which is a common misnomer around town. The, the cost to acquire is built into the costs that are paid for by the, by the user fees, and any changes we make to anything is cutting projects, cutting investment in infrastructure, or trying to find another place to fund that outside of the user fees. And the only place that would be, would be the general fund, and we all know we don't have money in the general fund as it currently stands. Now, the point Mr. Campbell made, we certainly could look at that and try and find things to cut, but I think we'd probably be cutting other infrastructure projects from other places that aren't enterprise funds. So I just think that it's really important in this conversation, if anybody has stumbled on MCAT for the first time tonight, and God bless you all, that, you know, people really understand how we have gotten here. And I guess the last point I would make is, I understand the concern about rates going up and that it's expensive to live in Missoula. I think that's something that we grapple with a lot, and on council, there are very limited ways that we easily can impact that. I think it would be really interesting to compare what has happened to the water company rates since the the city took control of it with what has happened to Northwest Energy's rates as far as a percentage in that same time period. Because I would guarantee you that the percentage that those rates have increased being run by a private group far outpaced what we're talking about here. So I think in the scope of what's going on with inflation across the nation over the last several years, that it's really important to keep in context that when we're talking about $900 a year, we're talking about $900 a year for people to have clean water to drink and for all of their waste to go away. And those are two things that I think are probably worth more than $900 a year, to be perfectly honest. So I actually think that people are getting a good deal. And there are some things in our city that maybe we look at and say, we could cut this, or we could do this. And I think property taxes are high, and we all struggle with that. But I do not believe that what the water company and what the utilities are asking for are out of line with that when you compare it in the broader context of what's going on in the private markets right now when it comes to utilities.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Nugent. I think you're spot on there. I think that wraps up all of our council comments then for this conversation. Counselor Jones, thank you for making sure we came back to that. Appreciate that. So that wraps up our parliamentary debate then on this item. We do have three motions on the floor. So Ms. Trimble, if you are ready, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on each of those.
Yes. We will start with the stormwater utility. It was just the first one listed in the original motion. Beginning with Carlino.
Which one are we voting on? Sorry.
Stormwater.
Yes.
Carly, uh, got it. Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
No.
Yes.
And Campbell?
No.
All right, that passes with eight in favor and two opposed. Next resolution is the resolution to increase the wastewater utility rates. Beginning with Farmer.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
No.
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
And Carlino?
Yes.
And that passes with eight in favor, two opposed. Our final is the resolution to increase the municipal water utility rates. Beginning with Jones.
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
No.
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Carlino?
No.
And Farmer?
Yes.
And that has six in favor, four opposed.
Okay. That moves us all the way through that item. Those resolutions have passed. Thank you, everybody, for a robust discussion, and also members of the public. Logan and others from the Utilities, Water Utilities, Stormwater and Wastewater, thank you for being here for all the question and answer. It's an important and clearly very interesting element of our city government. So we welcome you back for further conversation here in council chambers. Okay. Well, now move on to new business, item number six. And 6.1 is the Interland Conservation Easement Joint City-County Open Space Project. So Zach, oh yeah, sorry, setting the hearing. Simply setting the hearing. Thank you. Here we are setting a joint city-county public hearing and special meeting of City Council for November 6, 2024. So this is the Climate Conservation and Parks Committee. And looking to our chair, I don't believe then we do have a staff presentation, because we're simply setting the hearing, correct?
Yeah, I think that's right.
I can speak to it. This was an item that was already heard in committee, and we just had to change the date of the special meeting. It ended up not working for the county commissioners on the original date that we set. So this has been heard in committee. And originally, there was a special meeting voted, approved by council. So we're just changing the date. I just want to note for the public, this is a special meeting of City Council. It's not a committee meeting. It's a special meeting of council, and it will occur on a Wednesday.
Thank you very much for that clarification, Ms. Trimble. So yes, November 6 is a Wednesday. And that is typically City Council committee days, because it's joint city-county. We have to coordinate that with the Board of County Commissioners. Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. So then we'll go ahead and hear the motion then, and look to Chair Savage for this.
All right. I move that we set a joint city-county public hearing and special meeting of the City Council for November 6, 2024, to consider adopting a resolution authorizing expenditure of up to $344,000 of open space bond funds toward the acquisition of a conservation easement on the Interland property consisting of 1,667 acres to be held by Five Valleys Land Trust.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you very much. So we have the motion on the floor for the public hearing. And I believe that's all we have to do at this point. We don't have to take a vote for the public hearing instead of the public hearing, do we? Yeah, we do. Sorry. Sorry. Too much utility conversation, I guess. It filled my brain. Okay, motions on the floor. Before we take any more council comment or anything on that, a public comment on this motion. Come on up.
Robert Dunlop, 2316 West Avenue. I know this is not the hearing, but I want to make my thoughts known. I don't think it's right for Five Valleys to ask the taxpayers of this city or county to come up with that kind of money to a property that, under the current wording, we will not have access to. In other words, you're buying this land? Keep out.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. Other members of the public wishing to make comment? Not seeing any in the room. How about online? All right, not seeing any online either. That wraps up our public comment. Any council comments? Setting the public hearing. Not seeing any online or in the room here? All right. Then we'll go ahead and take a vote. Roll call vote, please.
All right. Voting on the new business item to set a special meeting of City Council for November 6. Beginning with Jordan.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
And just for clarification, that was 10 yeses, none opposed. Just for clarification, this meeting will be at 10:00 AM on the 6th. That was already, that timing has already been set. So if the public is interested in attending, it will be 10:00 AM on the 6th in City Council chambers or online, just like we are here.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much, Ms. Trimble. Appreciate that. So next, we will move on to our consent agenda. And before we do that, I'll mention that we'll take public comment for items on the consent agenda and regular business. The item under regular business is having to do with a contract for deed to sell 225 West Railroad Street. There was one no vote, which is why that's not on the consent agenda. So we'll go ahead and take public comment on those agenda items after Ms. Trimble reads the consent agenda on record first, please.
I'm going to push up my screen. This was, this is the meeting following a holiday week. So we have two rounds of accounts payable. The first is to ratify accounts payable for checks dated October 15, 2024, in the amount of $1,230,172.20. The second motion is to approve accounts payable for checks dated October 22, 2024, in the amount of $2,573,563.25. The next motion is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreements with the following community-based organizations for fiscal year '25, the International Coral Festival, in the amount of $12,000, the Aging Services, in the amount of $368,844.95, and the Missoula Economic Partnership, in the amount of $100,000. The next motion is to move the, move, a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the latecomer agreement with the Snow Farm Project Property Owner LLC for improvements to O'Leary Street. And finally, on our consent agenda, we have a motion regarding ordinance. So this is the first reading and preliminary adoption. And the motion is to set a public hearing on November 18, 2024, and approve an ordinance amending Title 10 of the Missoula Municipal Code to update regulations pertaining to traffic and parking by adding a new section, Title 10 dot 20 dot 180, amending Section 10 dot 22 dot 070, repealing and deleting Section 10 dot 22 dot 210, amending Section 10 dot 33 dot 020, and amending Section 10 dot 32 zero 40, to allow for large vehicles to turn left at a traffic calming circle if no oncoming traffic is present, prohibiting parking on streets and alleys adjacent to government buildings of signage indicates the area is reserved for government use for parking, clarifying when a vehicle may be removed for illegal parking, and allowing the Director of Public Works and Mobility to amend or provide for truck routes within the city limits by administrative rule. This ordinance would go into effect on December 18, 2024, if passed on the hearing date of November 18.
All right. Great. Thank you for all that information. I appreciate that. Is there any public comment on any items included in Agenda Number Eight, which is the consent agenda that Ms. Trimble just read on record, and the regular business item, which is 9.1G, which is the contract for deed to sell 225 West Railroad Street? Any public comments, starting with folks in the room tonight? Not seeing any in the room. How about online? Any public comment? I'm not seeing any online either. So then I'll move back to council and ask if council members have a desire to separate any of the consent agenda items. Not seeing any. Not seeing any online. All right. Then we can do a voice vote on item number eight, which is the consent agenda. Ms. Trimble?
All right. Voting on tonight's consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And then item number 9.1G is a holdover from the Public Works and Mobility Committee report. It is a contract for deed to sell 225 West Railroad Street. There's no additional staff report on this. And so I will look to Public Works Committee Chair, Counselor Anderson, for a, what? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. My apologies. It would normally be Ms. Pessera, but because she's absent this evening, it's Counselor. Cheryl, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I recommend that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract for deed to sell the property at 225 West Railroad Street for $90,000.
Great. All right. Thank you. The motion is on the floor. We have heard public, we've offered public comment. Is there any council comments? I see Counselor Anderson.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. And I just want to quickly say that I'm in support of this project, especially since the proceeds are going to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I think that we are limited in the ways that we can fund that important thing, important fund, I should say. And this is a good way to do it. And I think that, you know, we've done our due diligence to make sure that we're getting fair market price for this. And it's a good deal for both the city as well as the purchaser, because there's nothing else that we could really do with it. It's not capable being used for affordable housing, or something that we could put on that particular piece of property because of the way it is structured. But able to be able to put those proceeds towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I think that that is a good use of that, proceeds of that. And so I will definitely be in support of this. And that is it. Thanks so much.
You bet. Thanks for your comments. Counselor Carlino?
Yeah, I think this proposal's overall fine. I'm just, in general, against selling off like the city land to the highest bidder. I think, you know, this is a small piece of land. It's just a parking lot. But I'd rather see it used for public parking or public benefit, or it could be used for something in the future. And I think, you know, rather than voting against funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in each year's budget, and whenever we have resolutions to fund it, I see that we're just trying to sell off city land, which is not a sustainable option. We don't have that much land. And we're going to need this land for all sorts of other things that we're, that we're working on. And I think this one's, you know, not a big deal. I think it's okay to sell it off if you all prefer that. But I really don't think we should be selling the sleepy insight at the Broadway Russell. I think we should be using that for affordable housing or park, or for some sort of public benefit, or working with a developer to make it a public benefit, not just selling it off to the highest bidder. And same with the pain block. I think that would be a real shame that somebody donated that to the public, and then now we might be selling it off to the highest bidder. So just in general, I'm against that. But for this small parking lot, I think it's not a big deal. And I think it's fine. But I'm just not going to be voting for selling off the public lands.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Carlino. Any other council comments? Not seeing any in the room or online. Then we can go ahead and do a roll call vote, Ms. Trimble.
All right. Voting on item 9.1.GB, the contract for deed to sell 225 West Railroad Street. Beginning with Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Jordan?
Yes.
And that's nine in favor, one opposed.
Okay. Thanks very much. Appreciate that, everybody. That gets us through all of our regular business items. It moves us to our informational items. And we'll start with public comment on non-agenda items. So looking to folks in the room that wishing to make public comment on non-agenda items. Come on up.
My name is Chris Foster, F-O-S-T-E-R. Madam Mayor, I just wanted to come tonight and expand on comments that I have sent to all of you by email. I just want to expand on this for the people that may be listening in the room or online, in order to help them make an informed decision on stuff, you know, the homeless thing that we're going to be talking about in the coming days and weeks. I have a list here of books written by people who are experts in the field. They've been at it a long time. They know what works, what doesn't work. And I think we can learn a lot from them. So one of the books is In the Midst of Plenty, Homelessness and What to Do About It, by Mary Beth Shin and Jill Kudry from Vanderbilt University. Next, How 10- Next, How Ten Global Cities Take on Homelessness: Innovations at Work by Linda Gibbs. Homelessness is a Housing Problem: How Structural Factors Explain U.S. Patterns by Greg Colburn. Housing First: Ending Homelessness, Transforming Systems, and Changing Lives by Deborah K. Paget et al. Also has Housing First: The Pathways Model to End Homelessness for People with Mental Health and Substance Use Disorders by Sam Simberis, but that's the OG source right there. And also for something that's really related, a new book by Sarah Bronin, Key to the City, which is about zoning, which fits right into how we're gonna, where we're gonna put our affordable housing, how we want the city to look. So I hope people will take an opportunity to read those books. That stack of books is about 200 bucks. So I was wondering if there's any way we could set up some sort of program. I checked at the library this morning, they don't have any of them in stock. But it'd be nice to have some sort of program where we can, if there's a thing, something the city's working on, zoning, land use, can we have a set of books, a fund for, so the library can buy the books so low-income people can go to the library and inform themselves and make an informed decision or come to an informed opinion about something that's before the city as a whole? I think that would be good. Also, I think if you read those books, you'll find, at least I found, that our situation seems to be most similar to Houston's situation. A liberal city with a very not-so, with a state government that they're butting heads with, and so funding was a problem. They found a way to make it work. Anyway, that's, I'll leave it right there, but those are my recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Next public comment, come on up.
Brad Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N. Took a look at the website this morning and I'm pleased to see you finally updated the information guide about the ordinance. It still does not contain the required things like where can people sleep, where do we put our trash, where do the needles go, which still makes you out of compliance with 12.60. 30, Section B. You are the only person to be out of compliance, Ms. Mayor, for the entirety of the existence of the ordinance and your lawyer doesn't seem to want to work for you. So I'm here tonight to actually serve you and I'd like to ask permission to come forward and hand you this paperwork.
Have it to one of the officers, he'll make sure that I get it, please. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. All right. Other public comment, come on up.
Thank you, Ma'am. Bob Moore. I guess all of y'all probably know my feelings about the MRA. In case you don't, I detest it. It's wasting nothing but tens of millions of dollars from taxpayers to God knows who, businessmen, all kinds of people. Well, guess what I see in the paper today? Well, I think it was Saturday's paper. MRA Needs Oversight. I know one of the representatives of the city council is doing something on the MRA. I would really like to know what. And I request that you tell me what he is doing on the MRA board. Every time this lady passes a certain street, she curses the MRA. That's stronger than my, most of my comments. $66,000 of my tax money to build an out-of-state business next door to a local one. I do not think Missoula needs redevelopment at all. And I really do not think Starbucks, anybody thinks Starbucks needs help in building their coffee shops? If I do, I'll go by tonight and make a little $10 contribution to Starbucks, because I certainly want to see them do well. The fact that you can't afford it, tough luck. The last paragraph says, please dismantle the MRA and use the money for something useful like fixing the hard intersection of Spruce and another city. Millions and millions of taxpayers' money has been stolen, in my definition, and given primarily to developers, builders, things of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other public comment on items not on the agenda this evening?
I'd like to say an update on the Pavarello has been pretty stable in regards to me and myself and I, but there is something that I found very disturbing that I read on the poster board, I wish I could have took a picture of yesterday at the Johnson Center. Anytime the police are called in regards to somebody that's not leaving the facility means that they will be permanently exiled from the, from the Johnson Center and the Pavarello. My fact of the matter, if I got problems with the staff or anybody there, I will have 911 called by the staff if they're creating the problem, as they did in the word Africa that I found no resolution. They've been pretty well sucking up to me really well. But any problems that I don't feel fit, that are being threatened by the staff, Public Safety with their cameras will be coming in for an interview for the fact of the matter. And I am spreading that around, that instability of these staff members need to be documented by Public Safety. And if I'm trespass for their ignorance and so forth, it will hit the court for my enjoyment and the public's appreciation that they need to realize better. That's what the court's going to be for, because that's why I'm calling Public Safety. If I get trespassed from any of these facilities by the ignorance of the society, welcome to the court system and I'll be happy to go to jail to get it into court and I've already done it.
For the record, that's BK Spitzmacher. Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher, for your comments. All right. Anybody else in the room wishing to make public comment on items not on the agenda this evening? All right. Not seeing any here in the room. How about online? Any public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay. Not seeing any, then that wraps up our public comment on non-agenda items. Thank you very much for those. We'll now just shift to communications from the mayor. I wanted to just mention briefly why I was late. The Philanthropy Northwest Foundation is holding their annual meeting here in Missoula. Philanthropy Northwest is an organization that has six states within its region and Montana is one of those. And it's a foundation that convened a whole host of professionals, including other foundations that do work, and it was an opportunity for me just to welcome these folks to Missoula. So I apologize for being late. It is something, though, that we really cherish, I think, in terms of both municipality and then as certainly as, you know, just general members of the public is to have relationships with folks that work in philanthropy that help augment the, the necessary work that and, and needs that we have in our community. And often they are augmenting things that the government can't pay for. Northwest, excuse me, Philanthropy Northwest mission is to grow philanthropy's ability to redistribute resources and power to underserved communities in Northwest. So anyway, just wanted to mention that they're here, it's about 350 folks in our community. So you know I encouraged them to go out and enjoy themselves, spend some money here in Missoula as well, support our local businesses. I also just wanted to mention that I had the very unique opportunity to continue with Bloomberg Philanthropy Program that I've been invited to participate in. And this was the City Lab, they called it. It's a unique opportunity they extended to cities that have qualified to be part of the City Leadership Initiative. And that's a, City Leadership Initiative is a year-long program that we are undertaking. We've been accepted into the data track. So Counselor Jordan, I hope that that is something that'll give us some of the data we've been looking forward to for performance management and others. The specific project we'll be working on for that is in regards to our successful Unified Development Code adoption and implementation. And while that is something we are already underway, this will give us some really important technical assistance to do an even better job for the members of the public. The City Lab was really interesting. It was, it was held in Mexico City, which was quite a treat. And I will say that that is a very unique place in which it is a cosmopolitan and modern city and ancient all at the same time. It was refreshing to be in a place of, and as Missoula is in many parts, very walkable community. And so that is, I learned all sorts of things and as well as participating in those kinds of things allows the city of Missoula to apply for grant resources that we wouldn't otherwise be eligible for. One of the things is the mayor's innovation grant and that is a, it's a very competitive grant, but one that folks will be eligible for. And it basically helps us innovate around more or less our core public services. And others, maybe things like art on asphalt that would help not only energize some parts of town, but also may address some, some safety issues as well. I had an opportunity to tour some of those locations and it was really helpful and unique to see how some of that's worked in that community. So that was really good time spent. And then I just wanted to send out a congratulations. I'm going to get the title wrong, but my previous organization, Homeward, I helped start this work before I left there and they were recently invited and granted by the MacArthur Foundation to receive a grant. It's actually through the county and it's in partnership with Missoula County and the city of Missoula is a clear partner in this, to work on reducing jail recidivism through helping folks that are returning citizens from the correctional institution secure housing. And this is one of these ongoing and well-documented challenges with folks that are leaving the correction system that when there's not adequate supports, and there certainly is not in the state of Montana, we lack significant coordinated efforts at the statewide correction level in terms of helping people transition successfully, not only with all sorts of different kinds of social supports, but certainly job and employment supports and housing support. So more to come on this, but this is a real opportunity and it's an opportunity for me to also acknowledge the work of our criminal justice coordinator, Chelsea Whitman, who brought this project opportunity to Homeward and they have continued forward this. So more to come on this, but great partnership between Homeward, Missoula County, and the city of Missoula, working to help folks that are returning citizens live a more stable life. So just wanted to share that good news and I will go ahead and turn it over to council comments and start with Counselor Campbell, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll pass tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Savage?
Yeah, I just had a few quick things. So I don't know if any of you have been on the north side lately, but there are a lot of infrastructure improvements that are underway and have been, are very close to being completed. The Fifth to Warden to Turner Street sidewalk project, significant amount of sidewalks that have gone in over there. And I walk them in the evening and it has been really nice to see. We also have two public work, I mean, public arts projects that have recently been completed in the North Side Park. We have bathrooms that have been painted by many residents, but also by artist Stella Noll and they're really beautiful. They were the little brown, you know, for service bathrooms and now they're actually quite lovely. And then there is a mural project on the Greenway. We all laugh on the north side because the Greenway is the path right beside the tracks. There's not a lot of green going on there, but there is a beautiful mural project that has just recently been completed there as well. And so with that, I also just wanted to announce that there is, there's some other street projects, some street transportation projects that are happening. And on Wednesday, this Wednesday, from 5:30 to 7 at Burn Street, Public Works would like to hear from residents about some other projects that are going in. And the first phase of that will be a roundabout at Phillips and Scott, technically not North Side, but close enough. And some striping, I think, will also be discussed there. And, and then there's a phase two of that project, which will be another roundabout farther down Scott. But if you want to come out and participate, that would be great. And then the last thing I wanted to say is I spent some time last week in North Carolina and South Carolina. My family lives there and I spent a day volunteering in Asheville, North Carolina. I used to live there. I like to say I grew up there because I spent my early twenties there and that's pretty much when I was doing a lot of my growing up, I think. And there was significant devastation from Hurricane Helene and I have a soft spot for that place in the world and I kind of needed to go put eyes on it and see what was happening there. There's a ton of destruction, for sure, and a lot of resilience, a lot of community spirit. And I expected nothing less from Asheville, but it really did, for me at least, put into perspective. And I'm not minimizing the issues that we have here in Missoula because we certainly have them and we are all working very hard to try and remedy some of those. But in the face of a disaster like that, it really gave me some perspective coming back here and thinking about sort of how we are all working toward community and projects and process. So anyway, I think Asheville's going to be okay. It's going to take a minute. I can't imagine having to deal with the level of sort of just municipal planning and what they, the hill that they have to climb, but I was glad to have been there. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments and just to add to that, I was so grateful that we did not have a dump of rain after our storm on July 24th, because I cannot imagine what that would have been like, having the systems that we were already dealing with. So I can, I can only imagine what Asheville and other places are, are going with. Real intense. Thank you.
I'll pass tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Jones.
I will pass as well.
Okay. Counselor Cheryl?
The sooner you vote, the sooner the texts and calls stop, so.
Vote. Thank you for the pro tip on that. Counselor Farmer?
Thank you, Ms. Savage, for mentioning the neighborhood meeting, because I do think that the west side is chomping at the bit to see what happens there, so I'm glad that you reminded the folks of that. And thanks for your updates, Mayor. Those were really interesting. I just wanted to give one quick mention. I did attend the Montana Association of Planners Conference two weeks ago and I was there not on council business, actually there on my day job representing the DNRC. And I was just really impressed walking away from hearing some of the presentations from our own planners. Aaron Wilson is the president and he did an amazing job of presenting and putting on a great event. I got to sit through another presentation from Ben Wise, which was really interesting. But I just walked away thinking we have such a stellar group of planners and we are really lucky and they're super engaged and they're teaching other cities as well in Montana and it just made me very proud. So I just wanted to give them a little shout out.
That's very nice. Thank you very much. Counselor Farmer, appreciate that. Counselor Carlino? Okay. Going online, any folks online wishing to make council comment this evening? Counselor Vasika?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that Parks is having a Parks Master Plan Open House tomorrow to shape the future of your outdoor spaces at the upcoming Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails. Shorthand is PROS, Master Plan Open House, from 5:00 to 7:15 tomorrow night at the Missoula Public Library Cooper Room A. So when we were acquiring Marshall Mountain, I read a lot of the PROS survey and I realized that, hey, I never got a chance to fill out that survey myself. So this is an opportunity for all of our citizens to get involved in how to shape the future of our parks. So I would encourage anyone who has thoughts, feelings, or opinions on that to go and do that.
Excellent. Counselor Vasika, thank you for doing that. And I'll add that it's a, it's a very robust planning process. And I'll add that it's a, it's a very robust planning process and the professional consultants that help a city like this walk through that are here. So it's a really good opportunity to learn more and thank you for giving a plug to that. Any other counselors online wishing to make council comment? Seeing a shake of the head of no, all right.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you both very much. And I was going to give a plug for the various events this month for our land use plan and I can't actually find the dates. So they're on our website somewhere and I couldn't find them on Engage Missoula. So we'll note that for our friends that the, I just gave a welcome to the land use plan presentation today, but I want to mention that we have been talking about updating our growth policy in our land use plan. The land use plan is the new growth policy. It is what is in compliance and meets the letter of the law, the state law for Senate Bill 382. It is a very, it's a dense but well-written land use plan. The land use plan is the much larger perspective before we get down to the development codes, including the zoning code and the land use map. But there's a draft land use map in this land use plan. And I will say that we have been listening to the, to the community for almost two years and we have taken what this community has asked us to do, which is to go big. This, this plan is, I would say, robust and I would encourage members of the public to take a look at it. If you comment on the land use plan now before October 31st, it gives the staff an opportunity to take a look at your comments and potentially work those into the plan. But you can make comment all the way up until the end of this year, 2024. The plan will be in front of the planning board and then eventually city council here will adopt that land use plan. That land use plan is a requirement of a city of the size of Missoula to be adopted by the governing body, the city council, in order for us to basically move forward within our development codes. The land use plan will be updated every five years, so I want to remind folks that this is something that I feel is a very bold step forward and I'm excited to hear what public comments and what council comments will be, but just want to mention that that's also another public engagement opportunity. And it largely is aimed at both addressing our community values like connectivity, so transportation, connectivity, climate, housing attainability and affordability and equity. And, and I want to emphasize that it's really focused, focused on those four areas and brings them together really well. So it's an excellent plan and there is an executive summary if you don't want to read 150 pages. There's a nine-page executive summary. All right, everybody. Thanks for listening to the final comments. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 8:35. Thank you. God. Sorry about all my sniffles. It just like hit me sitting here. All my sniffles. I've been like, I did take a COVID test and I do not have COVID.